Are we ready? Are you ready? Okay. All right. Hello. It is now 7:00 PM and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, April 7, 2025. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Karubus.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Gents.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
And Ms. Fazdak.
Here.
Ms. Gents, we have a quorum. Ms. Gents, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, May 5. We have two board salutes tonight. Ms. Jane.
Wabonzi Valley Scholastic Bowl Team Wins State. The board salutes the Wabonzi Valley Scholastic Bowl Team for winning first place at the Illinois High School Association 2A State Championship. The team defeated Stevenson High School in the final match with a 450-410 win. This is the first state title in the team's history. Congratulations.
Ms. Gents.
Dupage County Afro-Academic Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics Student Achievements. The board salutes the District 204 students who received gold medals at the Dupage County 2025 Afro-Academic, Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics Local Competition, including Niqua Valley 9th graders Joshua Tony and Amira Wheat, 11th grader Eddie Mason, and 12th grader Brianna Avan Harris, as well as Wabonzi Valley 11th grader Tiffany Tyas, who earned three gold medals. The competition featured 47 students from 20 area high schools competing in STEM, Business, Humanities, Performing Arts, and Visual Arts. Thirteen students earned gold medals across 16 categories and will advance to the National ACTSO Competition in Charlotte, North Carolina this July. Congratulations to these students on this outstanding accomplishment.
So let's thank all of these accomplishments in our district and congratulate the people who earn them. So, thank you. Next up, we have a student representative report by Ben Gula from Niqua Valley High School.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. My name is Ben Gula and I'm the school board representative for Niqua Valley High School. As the end of the school year quickly approaches, this will be the final board update from Niqua this year. So, let's get started. To review, Niqua clubs and activities have reached many students' successes. We've had 20 DECA and 40 BPA national qualifiers. Good luck in Sunnyside, Orlando for both chapters. Our theater department placed third at state for the production of Young Frankenstein. And lastly, our youth and government chapter did amazing at Springfield, especially for two juniors, Vanshika Shetty and Alex Wong, who won the state positions as a Secretary of State and Lieutenant Governor. Now, I would like to recognize three teachers who have recently received recognition of their hard work and dedication to Niqua. Mr. David Rika drove his way to victory and received the Driver Education Teacher of the Year Award for Illinois. And Ms. Beth Knuth was recognized as the Marketing Educator of the Year awarded by Illinois DECA. And lastly, Ms. Laura Wallen is in the running for Health Educator of the Year for Illinois. We are very proud and grateful to have these amazing teachers. Looking forward, we have a variety of events planned to end the school year on a strong note. Upcoming events for our seniors include senior spectacular, senior brunch, senior reflections, and much more. While these seniors enjoy these events, our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors get to do state testing. We have been providing ACT readiness for the past flex blocks and access periods to help our students. Our student council will be hosting our Spring Blood Drive on April 23rd. And lastly, we get to end the year with many student performances such as the Spring Musical and Fine Arts Festival. We hope to see you there. Looking at this year in review, there have been many student and educator awards, achievements, and recognitions. Everyone at Niqua has been proud to be a Wildcat and it has been my pleasure to continue to update the board throughout the school year. I'm looking forward to where the end of the school year will take us and I hope you have a good rest of your evening and go Wildcats.
So, Ben. Thank you so much for all of your reporting. Will you be back next year or no?
Um, no, I will not. My friend Kylie Tran will be.
Okay, well, thank you so much for all of your informative speeches.
Wait, are you graduated?
Um, I'm a junior.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have our school spotlight and tonight it is Welch Elementary, presented by Sarah Noack and Julie Vogel. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Dr. Tally and the Board of Education for the opportunity to be here tonight. Again, I'm Sarah Noack, the very proud principal of Welch, and I'm thrilled to have Julie Vogel, our Student Services Coordinator, here with us this evening as we share a bit about what makes Welch so special. At Welch, this quote couldn't be more true. As we were thinking about and talking about what we wanted to highlight, everything came down to the culture and the climate that we've created at Welch. Though we're a large school, we are definitely a family. We consistently show up for one another. We come together to create an environment, not just where everybody succeeds, but everybody really thrives in all areas. This is our current year's Welch family photo. Much like one might find in someone's home, our staff lounge is filled with a wall of all of our family photos from throughout the years, which is really special. It's fun to look back and to see how staff have changed and how we've evolved. But one thing is consistent, even the year that we were in masks is just you can see the joy. And even though that's the first day and some might think that that joy looks different throughout the year, you really could, you know, call for an impromptu picture and that same joy and... Well, we just turned 25. Up until last year, we didn't have our own mission statement. And that was something that the staff felt strongly about. Welch has changed throughout the years and we felt it was important to come together and really collaborate on what our vision was, what our mission was, what we wanted to do. So, this was something that took several days to kind of cultivate. There was a lot of conversation, a lot of collaboration, but it really encompasses everything that Welch strives to do. We believe the Welch community is a family. We all belong. We believe that the Welch community is diverse but shares the common goal of doing what is best for everyone. We believe regardless of your story, everyone is deserving of respect, kindness, and grace. We believe that every student is someone's unique child who deserves to be validated and included. We believe our students can do hard things. We believe our staff makes everybody feel like somebody and we believe that even on rainy days, we still find our rainbow. We are welcoming, encouraging, loving, collaborative, and helpful. We are Welch. So, this was something and is something that we put on every internal document, every agenda. It's something that we revisit and reflect on frequently. And I'm certain that as Welch continues to change, that this might change a little bit, so.
All right. Speaking of change, some new thing this year is the Kindness Squad. The Kindness Squad was created out of an IPEF grant that one of our Yale teachers, Sarah Aleo, submitted last year. Every Friday, the squad stands outside the school entrances and they greet students, they cheer, they give high fives. It makes our students smile, feel welcome, and gets them excited for another day and then another week of learning after that. It's really just a little thing that's gone really well. Welch is a big building and one of the challenges we have is to ensure that all of our students feel seen and valued. And we do this through providing an opportunity to build rapport and relationships between students and teachers during a weekly connection time. We look beyond just the classroom to make this happen by creating opportunities for teachers and students to play games, read together, shoot hoops, or just hang out and chat. Teachers identify students for this connection time each week and it's helped the kids that really are reluctant to come to school or struggle sometimes to feel more comfortable and confident in the school environment.
One of the things that the Welch White Tigers do really well is play. And this is something that is essential for everybody, not just for student learning, but really for everyone's overall growth. As we know, it sparks creativity, it helps with problem solving, and teaches social skills like teamwork and communication. It reduces stress, it boosts energy, allowing everybody to be more available to learning. So, for years, Welch has participated in the National Day of Play. We did this well before COVID and once COVID happened, things shifted a little bit. So, we've been looking for different ways to kind of bring that back and ensure that those skills are still a main piece of our students and our staff's day. It's something that everybody looks forward to. These are bins of different games and activities that our PTA helped fund and create. And it is amazing. I thought that the kids would really like, you know, the kinetic sand and the magnet tiles and things like that. There is a line every day for Hungry Hungry Hippo. I mean, it is, it's just amazing and it's not just the kids, but the teachers too. So, through this opportunity, that play, they're able to build relationships and socialize with different peers and their teachers and just see different sides and relax. So, as Julie was saying, it really does help build that community and help them just feel more connected, not just within their classroom, but within their grade levels. So, this has been a really nice addition this year. Yes.
We celebrate and highlight our incredibly diverse student population in authentic ways every day. For example, let's hear from some of our Yale students.
Oh, no, sorry. This is my fault. I used Canva instead of Google because I thought it would be cuter and I'm paying for it.
Welcome to Welch. Welcome to Welch. Welcome to Welch. More than 50 different languages. More than 50 different languages. All of them are local. All of them are local. You are better than us. Better than us. You are 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 better than us.
So cute. So, every Friday, a group of bilingual students that speak the same language will gather in our office and they will begin our announcements with a welcome greeting in their language, which they will then translate to English. And it's been really empowering for those kids and the other students are so excited to hear what it is every Friday.
Sorry. Sorry.
And they try to learn those new words and phrases. It's just been a little, again, another little thing that's made a big change in the school.
Absolutely. I'm sorry. I pushed the wrong button. Okay. And then our last piece of pride and celebration, Welch is celebrating 25 years of awesome this year. We invited our entire inaugural staff, administrators, teachers, crossing guards, lunch supervisors, back to the building in October, back in the fall of 1999. They had taken a panoramic photo with the entire student population and all of the staff. And we were fortunate, we had over 25 staff members that returned from that first year. Rod Mack was one of them. And it was really just an incredible day. And it's so cheesy, but we always say like, once a white tiger, always a white tiger. And seeing these people come back, they haven't been in the building for years, a lot of them. And just feeling the excitement and seeing the love between the colleagues and seeing the excitement from the students was really, like, it was a feel-good day for everybody. It's one of the, one of the things that makes Welch so special. But we were able to recreate that picture. So, this is all 600-plus White Tiger students, 100-plus staff, 25 inaugural staff. It did not go as smoothly as we had anticipated, if you can imagine. But it's something really special and something that we will look back on in 25 years from now, so. It turned out great.
Well, congratulations on the 25 years. And boy, did your emphasis on community and kindness come across. I mean, it's like, I want to go to Welch. So, thank you so very much for sharing all of your fun that's going on in the school there. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment and 60 minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups. And as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So, we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have one speaker tonight, Jack Pie.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm a current student at Matia Valley High School, so I do live in the district and...
And no kids here.
Yeah, no kids. My name is Jack Pie and I'm here to speak about the contract between District 204 and Organic Life LLC. While Organic Life may be a reliable food provider, the contract in place has had consequences that restrict student opportunities, particularly when it comes to creativity, fundraising, business education, and volunteerism. At Naperville North High School, there was once a student-run cafe that served smoothies and drinks during the mornings and lunch periods. The cafe wasn't just about the food, it was about a real-world learning experience, teaching students about entrepreneurship, responsibility, and collaboration. Unfortunately, the cafe was shut down due to 203 contract with Organic Life, which labeled it as a competitor and was taken over by Organic Life LLC. Students who have tried to run fundraising in District 204 during lunch or before school for clubs, events, or even sports have been similarly blocked under the same clause in the Organic Life contract, again labeled as competitors. This is a direct barrier to student growth. I am going to submit a FOIA to request and obtain the full contract and any amendments because I believe students and families deserve transparency. I urge the board to consider how contracts like these impact student engagement, business, learning, and creativity when future agreements are negotiated. I hope the board makes space for student-driven initiatives that benefit our schools and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, and members of the Board of Education and Indian Prairie community. It is that time of the year when you can register for the annual IPEF Walk/Run. Emphasize the word "walk." The event will take place on October 19th. This year will be the 12th annual event. It is the most important fundraiser for IPEF and the funds help to support our schools with half the funds going directly to the schools and other funds supporting events such as Fine Arts Festival, Robotics, and Young Hearts for Life. Registration is open now for people to sign up for the event. I am looking forward to the Run/Walk/Walk/Walk. And know that many of our schools and staff participate in the program. Last year, I was not able to participate due to being ill, so I'm looking forward to this year's walk. The goal is to raise $100,000 and that goal is achievable with your help. So, do you have to run for this event?
No.
No? You can, you can do what? You can?
Walk.
Yeah, okay, just make sure everyone understands that. April is Arab American History Month. In this month, we celebrate the Arab American story and the contributions that Arab Americans have made to our country and the world, our schools, and our schools in their own way are recognizing the role of Arab Americans in our lives. And before I send the meeting back to the Board of Ed, I would like to request that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Dr. Christine Igoe as the new Assistant Superintendent for Student Services effective July 1, 2025. Dr. Igoe will be replacing Dr. Christine Sepul, who is retiring. Dr. Igoe is coming back to Indian Prairie School District, so you can come back home again. She wants served as an Assistant Principal for our district. Other roles she has had include Special Education Administrator and Liturgy Coach in Plainfield, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services for Naperville District 203, and most recently, Chief Academic Officer with St. Charles Community Unit School District 303. Dr. Igoe spoke about her desire to create positive relationship with schools and school administrators. She also talked about building upon our district's current inclusiveness for students. She is excited about the opportunity to get to know the teachers, students, staff, and administrators and working collaboratively with them. And Ms. Donahue, I will now turn the meeting back to you.
I need a motion to approve Christine Igoe as Assistant Superintendent for Student Services as presented.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve Dr. Christine Igoe as Assistant Superintendent for Student Services as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdak.
Yes.
Mr. Karubus.
Yes.
And Ms. Gents.
Yes.
The motion passes. Congratulations, Christine.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to come back.
Did you bring anyone with you tonight?
I did not.
Okay.
Unfortunately, my children are grown and in college and not around. My husband had a meeting, but...
Congratulations. We're happy to have you as part of our team here.
Well, thank you. I'm so excited to be here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next, I need a motion to approve Leslie Mitchell as principal at Hill Middle School as presented.
I move that the Board approve Leslie Mitchell as principal of Hill Middle School as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fazdak.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Karubus.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. We congratulate Leslie. All right. Next, we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for the approval and consent agenda items F through Y.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items F through Y as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to comment that on item Q, we are approving the contract extension for our food service, which relates directly to one of the public comments.
And I will say that Mr. Ron Johnson is meeting with that young man right now and talking with him.
Perfect.
We are a timely board.
Wow, that is fast.
What a public comment can do.
All right. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdak.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
And Ms. Karubus.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution approving proposed amendments to the DWC Intergovernmental Agreement as presented.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution approving proposed amendments to the DWC Intergovernmental Agreement as presented.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, this is just reorganization of the special needs organizations that serve us, correct, Dr. Tally?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Karubus.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Fazdak.
Yes.
The motion passes. I now need a motion and a second to approve the textbook and accompanying digital resources for the use beginning in the 2025-2026 school year as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the textbook and accompanying digital resources for use beginning in the 2025-2026 school year as presented.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Brief inquiry, we had this material prior in a meeting was presented.
Yes.
And did we get any public comment or feedback on the material?
We did not.
Thanks.
All right. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Karubus.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdak.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Mr. Rising.
Yes.
The motion passes. I now need a motion and a second to approve the high school course updates as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the high school course updates as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? This information was also previously presented and there was any public comment?
No.
All right. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Karubus.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdak.
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. We will now have a presentation from Rodney Mack, William Gray, and Brian Grinstead regarding the Technology Spring Update.
We should change this up one. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Tally, members of the board, for our opportunity to give you a spring update of technology. We know this is the one you always look forward to, this and the one in the fall. See? Got it on tape, too. Normally, this one, we always are talking about something big that we have coming up. Again, as if you remember last year, we moved the phone, went with the security thing, so we kind of are off a year on that, but we really kind of came up with something we think, all the work we've done the last couple of years to really put us in this, you know, I don't call it a 24/7 environment, but where we are at with all of our services. If you ever get notices of things being off and stuff like that, we're really ready to put out, you know, a complete plan for everything that happens once anything goes on or off. So, part of this is we're going to look at our network setup and connections. We're going to give an understanding of the systems and services, also what failure points and our responses to those. We're going to take a look at what redundancy would look like and the feasibility of doing that and then some of the future planning and considerations we're going to be putting forward to finish up this year and into next fall. We've always looked at really three main services from the tech field outside of everything we do education-wise. We always have the phone, the network or the connectivity. Internet has become a real big one. For those three services, we always rely on two main service providers. Power, and here in Naperville, we have Naperville and we have ComEd for the Aurora schools. And then our internet service providers, which we have two of, which we'll be talking about tonight. But those are really, we're really reliant on those two bottom boxes to keep everything else operational. One of the big things that we've done the last couple of years too, if you look up there, we don't have our service names. We're just trying to say which platforms we're using, or not platforms we're using, but what the products are. About 80% of these in the last five years have moved to a cloud-based service. That's intentional. We did that for a reason. We've become reliant then more on internet and other resources, but from our Google Workspace that everything that's really worth, the students spend almost 90% of all their work, our human resource systems, even the new ones we're bringing in, the last year's business operation system that moved, the phone system we brought in, our website, our communications, all of those have moved off-site. Same thing with our student information. Library moved last summer, data warehouse last summer, even our help desk. And all of the resources that students ask or receive and get information for is all online now. Email is also not in-house. It used to be if... Email is also not in-house. It used to be if we lost power here, you couldn't check your email. So all of these services now live out in the cloud to where you'll see why internet, power are two main things that we need up and running.
So what you see up there is our basic understanding of our network topology. What we've done over the last couple of years is simplified it to make it more efficient and faster.
That looks simple, right?
Yeah, to me, it looks simple. So basically, there are, there are two main components here. There's the WAN or the wide area connections, and what that does is that connects each individual facility to be able to talk to the other facilities. And then there's the internet, which allows us to get out to do our day-to-day applications that over 90% now live over in the internet. So what you see here is we've simplified it to create two different routes. So we have two groups. Half the buildings are going out one internet line and half the buildings are going out another internet line. On average, our internet usage is between two to three gigs, and both internet pipes give us 10 gigs apiece. The nice thing and the reason why we have so much internet there is in the event of a failure, all schools will automatically fall over to the one that's working, and it goes back and forth. So basically, with these two groups, they have a, each group has its own priority location that it's supposed to go to, and if that location somehow becomes offline, it automatically flips over in seconds. The green line that you see in between the two core switches there, that is a, kind of like the wide area network, except it only communicates to the two data centers. We use that link for data replication between the two data centers. As you can see in the, the link, the, the, like, looks like a tire, basically, and the reason it's set that way is because that connection is actually a multi-point-to-multi-point connection, which lets us connect directly to a particular building instead of going back to the data center and then turning around and going back out to that building, which helps for some of the services we use internally so that it doesn't have to make multiple trips. It can go directly to where it needs to go.
And all of these, this, these two failure points, they happen automatically as well. It's not, we don't have to react when something goes down. It can tell that if its route is closed, its normal route, it'll reroute itself out the other internet. So again, as we go back through this, we look at why those cloud-based services and why that internet replication, which is, this is the first year of that. That's one of those key things we did with all the routing changes and the network work that BJ's working on the last two years was to really make sure that that's almost seamless. No one would even notice if an internet went out. And then, as we go through, these are the only services that we still have that are self-hosted or onsite. Our file shares, which, anything that's non-Google related, so Word documents, things like that, our transportation software, we'll have an update on that, security cameras, our door access controls, and our building intercoms. Those are three things right now that all still do live. When we talk about building automation in-house, those will be some things that we're going to talk about, possible changes.
So this is kind of just a brief overview of a little bit diving down into individual buildings. So managed provider equipment would be like your Comcast router at home. It's the AT&amp;T or our Comcast, basically router in each building. So that's the one comes in, then it comes into going into the head-in closet or the MDF, which is where the main switch closets are. And from there, each building has one at, one to two at the elementary schools, seven to eight at the middle schools, and up to 15 or 20 at each high school where each sub-closet goes out. You're limited by the length of runs for CAT 5 and network cables, so further, the bigger the building, the more closets you have. Basically, it's just a limitation of networking. At this level, now, we're talking about getting down to minor disruptions. A single phone with new phone system, we're under contract warranty with them, so if a phone breaks, they give us a new phone. Single switch failure, we can go out and just swi, uh, switch out a switch or re-cable some stuff in in a fairly short order with things on hand, send the original switch in for warranty and just kind of cycling it through. And then down to wireless in the building, because with everyone's laptops and Chromebooks, wireless is no longer optional. Mostly, more rooms are served by more than one access point. As you get more devices than one access point, you'll see some slowness, maybe some edge failures of the furthest away. But for the most part, there's overlap in every room with multiple access points. If one were to go down and there's only one within an hour, we can get a, someone out and put a hot, um, hot swap access point up. And then from here, we're kind of looking at major point of failures. If we lose your Comcast router at home, your house has no internet. Kind of same thing here. If we lose service from AT&amp;T, like I said, if Comcast is still up, we're still good because we can fail it back over. But if you're losing the box in the school, you don't have anything to get out to fail over, kind of just like at home. At that point, just like at home, you've got your phone for a hotspot. You, we can run some over. We have some at the district office. Middle schools have some on hand. We can get certain people up. It's not going to get everyone up, but critical things we can still able to do just at home. So if you lose your main, main provider out in the building, you're going to be down and working on hotspots or your phones. The other major issue is power, whether it be Naperville or ComEd. You know, power lights go out, not much else is working. There are some UPSs that'll keep a few things up for a few minutes, but for the most part, at that point in time, you really are out. Access points are down, so even if you had a provider getting that connected to get back out, you're pretty much going to be at the same point you were before with phones and hotspots and such.
So as we look at that and think, you know, we still can have outages with internet and, and power. One of the main things that we looked at the last couple of years was the communication that we need to keep up. That's been a focus of ours, again, with the phone solution, the work with the communications team, Lisa and her, and her group with the new website, and the tool, we call it 204 Connect, which is really the mass communications, that the text and all of that, and staff email. One nice thing with our new phone solution is it does, you can download the app that will automatically sync so that if any phone call comes into your, someone calls my district phone, it rings on my cellphone. Doesn't, it shows me that it's a district phone call. We can do that same type of a, a soft client on a laptop as well. So if internet goes out at a building and we get them hotspots, the middles and high school have them, you can have the, office secretaries can log in on a laptop and have their soft phone. Phones will still come in. No one would be wise that, that the actual things are down. That same thing works for 204 Connect Communications. We have just a couple of screen shares there. Again, just like a, I would say 99% of the time, we don't use our phone app for this, but it's there for emergencies. Principal can go in and set the message. They can, you know, send it to text message. They can send it to email. They have groups. It can be just staff. They can have whatever, yeah, certain grade levels, whoever they need to talk to, certain buses. That, the one on the right, that's the alert. They could also update their website right away from their cellphone. They could put that up, and that's one of those screens. If you ever remember the beginning of the year where we don't let anyone go past until they click okay, you can actually put a link that says, you know, power and phones are down, please use email, and they can't go anywhere else on the website unless they click okay. And then you can make that disappear in 30 minutes. There's really nice features to it. Again, just some smaller screenshots there. You can see they can select to send just to their teachers, to the staff. Those laundry lists of everything from every bus and every group that they have in their normal is available on their phone. Us at the district level see that where we can also help out and send communication to any building as, as a building principal would. The other nice thing, too, is with the email being off-site as well, I mean, everyone used to always have the email on their phone anyways, but now with it being in the cloud, even if we lose internet or power, our email is still coming through a cell signal. We don't expect everybody to have that on. Administration, yes, many do, but again, we don't encourage anyone, you know, don't tell them they have to work after hours and that, but in emergencies, most people can access their email through that, too, again, to send out critical messages or get critical updates if there's ever power outages.
So the way our power is currently set up at our main data centers is you'll have our network resources, our servers, our switches, and they'll be hooked into a UPS or an uninterrupted power supply. Those things only last for about 30 to 60 seconds, but, and they're only meant to last for that long until the main generator kicks in. Once the main generator kicks in, it'll keep the main data center equipment up so that, for instance, if we lose power here, all the schools can continue with their day-to-day stuff. It's only us here that really lose access to things. Because the generator is only on the main data center. It's not in the IDF's or the extra closets.
And currently, those setups are only at a handful of buildings, but mainly definitely Matia and this location, which are our main two data centers. High schools have generators, but not all of our stuff are always connected to that, as they were originally more for, you know, emergency light generators. Tech kind of came years later after Wavonzi was built, so those, those are really only at our two main centers.
So how do we create a redundant service? So what we would need to do is we would need to bring in a secondary service. For instance, right now, we're with AT&amp;T. We would have to bring in a company like Comcast to come in. And to try to make it as redundant as possible, we would also have to install this link at the other side of the building, hoping that it comes from a different direction. Because, you know, one of our big outages was when a truck ran over a pole and tore all the fiber on there. Well, if those two pairs of fiber are on the same pole and that truck takes that pole down, there's really nothing else we can do at that point. So we could do something like that and hope that it's coming from a different location. But with power, we need to make sure that it has its own UPS and a, and a generator to keep it up and running. Same thing, power redundancy. In order to accomplish this, basically, we have to have UPSs at all our MDF and IDF closets, as well as backup generators installed in every one of our buildings. And then wiring ran from each of those closets back to that generator. Ah, could get pretty pricey. And there's, that would just give us the power to keep the equipment up, but not necessarily save us from a truck knocking the pole over with all the fiber connected to it.
Yeah, if everybody remembers that, I think it was two summers ago, the dump truck drove down the road with the, the dump up and it, on 34, and it cut Naperville's, ours, and not just districts, I mean, every business as well. West Aurora, I mean, for miles and miles, because they cut the main fiber of both Comcast, AT&amp;T, they all go down the same line, so some things we can't avoid if people keep their dump trucks in. But here, we'll look at the feasibility of this.
So here's feasibility, just talk about, you know, broad brushstrokes for redundant power and costs. UPSs, you know, talking about almost a million dollars. And just like everything in electronics in it, it has a useful life in it, so it becomes a reoccurring cost. On top of the UPSs, you need those in order, because the generator takes a moment to fire up, so even for that, you know, five minutes of fire up, you're at a million dollars. You're at the generator site for another $5 million. And then that yearly maintenance, because generators need to be maintained, UPS need to be checked, they have batteries. You're talking about just over $100,000 a year for maintenance, getting up to the price of maintaining a Bugatti, but without all the fun that comes with that. And, you know, then redundant services costs, same thing as BJ was talking about on the WAN costs, and really to get that redundancy in there on the just-in-case, you were talking, almost adding, you know, $360,000 just to the cost of just in case a dump truck takes out one line. If it takes out both lines, redundancy really wouldn't have helped us at all anyway, so that's kind of where we're at. And kind of, you know, broad, there are six to seven outages a year is what we kind of experienced, but most of them, we're fortunate in the area that we live in. We don't really have power that often. ComEd in April will keep us up. But less than a few minutes, so we're talking about spending the above things to try to save a site being down for a couple of minutes. And I think the largest outage we had, we said, was about four hours at one location, and that was a construction crew tapping into ComEd's line for some fireworks. ComEd had it restored in about four hours. In those situations, we can, like you said, have hotspots available. We can run out. If we need to do just some base services until the power's repaired.
I mean, for, for part of that, just, I mean, I did a price point, just to say, you know, say we had done all the work in the beginning, and in a, in the four-year period I've been here, we've had one four-hour outage, it would have cost about $485,000 for each hour to keep one site up. It was during the summer, and only the principal and the secretary were there, and we brought them hotspots. And again, even then, the hotspots did what we needed. They could get into the student information system and finish scheduling. Timing was bad because the schedules were due the next day, but it, we were able to have that solution without having to expense, such a large expense for something that's, you know, happens a handful of times a year. It's troubling when it happens, but, because you never know when it's going back on, but it, they, they don't last very long. So some of the future plannings that we're looking at, we are looking at doing work moving our file storage to cloud services, whether that be OneDrive, Google Drive shares, so that everything is in the cloud and we're not relying on ever having to come back and pull files. Working with Ron and moving the busing server to the cloud, again, that's the one that's still in-house right now that we do need to have access to. If there was ever an outage here and we needed to get to the buses, the bus information, that's one that we really do have to work on. Looking at supporting the generator work, again, I talked with John Robinson about if there was anything in the master facility plan with generators, just to make sure that there are in some buildings where they're looking at generators. Just to say, let's make sure MDFs and IDFs are included if we're doing those, not, not to buy one specifically for tech purposes, but just to say, let's make sure, again, we don't spend money twice. If, if it is something that we're going, we're going to take advantage of wherever generator work is going to be happening. One of the big things we think we're going to be doing is retrain and practice the mobile communication platforms. Again, all administrators have been trained in that 204 Connect and know how to do it, but every time I say, if your bus three's running late, just pull your phone out and do this. And I can tell them, they're like, 99% of the time, they're doing it at a nice, slow pace on a computer because they know it and they want to check. I can quickly pick out the right bus from a, but again, I have a little bit more experience doing that, that it is that, how do we train them, just like we do everything else, until they, they don't need to send them from their phone. But being able to know how those communications work is something we're going to be looking forward to doing this, in this coming year. And then also looking at working with users, secretaries, other building people, so that they're aware of what these outages mean and what things could they use and need from us. What things can we have ready to go? Again, planning for those few 30-minute outages that we might have. We did have Chrome lost power at the start of the day. One day this year was the only time that was really like people scrambling. I was driving by and one of BJ's guys was already driving to meet me with, we already knew, pull attendance records. So we already had them ready for paper, knowing that they said power was going to be on, but we have to have attendance done. And it's just one of those that we have the plans. How do we keep and really find out what other people think they need to, to be ready for any type of outage we might have, which, in all honesty, it really should be very, very limited with, with the setups that we have now. Questions?
Okay, Ms. Fosdick, do you have any?
My only question is really basic. Do our phones work if the power goes out? Our landline phone?
Through our cellphone app, they do.
Yeah, you need, you need power for your actual device to continue to work.
The phones, the phones are powered by the switches and the IDF's and MDF's, so power goes out, the switches are out, so the phones.
So the landlines go out?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But you, a lot of the secretaries that I've worked with already have the app on their phone for that purpose.
Okay, is that something we would consider requiring?
We would, we would, that's what we're going to do, the training to get them so that they can pull out their laptop and do the soft on here. We don't want to expect everybody to use a personal cellphone if they're, if they're not in that administration group, but we would say, now flip open your laptop, because that will still work if they have the hotspots. These things will still hold a battery charge, and they can log into that soft app right there on the computer.
I'm coming at this question for, as a food allergy parent, someone with a food allergy, and we, we keep our landlines specifically for when the power goes out and...
Yeah, none of our phones are actually landlines.
None of them are.
We've got to riddle all of them. They're all cloud-based. Everything is a cloud-based, which again, would work off a hotspot or anything else.
But there's a back, yeah, there's back, that's really what I wanted to know. Thank you for the clarification.
Have the app. Yes, all administration does, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rising?
My first question, unrelated, this is for the students. Can we make the Wi-Fi faster? No. I hear that a lot from students. You don't have to answer that. So you're not proposing...
20% of it.
Yeah. I'm sorry, unless you want to answer it.
They just need a faster device. We give them the device, too, so I don't want to...
Okay, so I was a little confused at first of the presentation because I thought you were actually proposing real-time redundancy for power and internet, but you're, okay. That makes me feel better because I know that it is extremely pricey. Is a big lift with this, you know, I heard, again, I don't understand the difference between the MDF IDF necessarily, but I heard there's some cleanup in those areas that needs to happen as well. Is that kind of what I heard, or that they communicate better? Okay.
No, I, I, I think we're in a good spot. I, I think the, the, the reason for this one was to say how we can be, try to get as fully 24/7 as possible, and how much money it would cost versus what we're doing now. And we feel confident that we're up a majority of the time.
Okay.
I mean, I, I believe in my sixteen years in a school district, the, it's been like ninety-nine point nine percent of the time that those WAN links or those circuits at each of the buildings have been up. There's always a chance that we could lose a circuit here and there, but I don't, I don't think we need to really clean anything, anything up there.
And then, as far as, I think with slide ten, the things that are currently hosted in-house or on-site. I understand getting transportation up on the cloud, that's kind of a no-brainer. I understand the reason for us having the file shares on our servers to have access to some of that stuff. Is there a, is there a reason to not want to transfer some of that stuff with the security cameras, the access controls, intercom systems? Like, I would think we would want to have that still controlled on-site, just because there's a lot of security around that.
I, I think if we went to that was our only access, but since there's still keys and things out there, that's kind of, those would go hand in hand. A lot of those switch, things are also runoff, they're POE, meaning if we were able to keep the switches up, a lot of those door strikes and door access and things would stay online. So again, it'd be a smaller area and that's part of that, working with facilities. If they're going to start putting generators or even UPSs and some of those to just kind of give us that control. Security footage, uh, security cameras, I don't know if we ever would move that off-site, mainly because of the amount of data and traffic that we'd be sending security footage up to the cloud to watch back down. And a power outage is just not going to be recording those times. That's got to stay in, on-site, so unless it had its own, you know, individual UPS.
Okay.
Well, the cameras would go down during a power outage.
That's all I have, thanks.
Skunks?
I do not have any questions for you guys, but I did genuinely want to say, I actually, I do very much enjoy your presentations. I mean, I was not being facetious at the beginning because how important technology is for the kids now learning with all of, a lot of, as we just approved, a lot of the curriculum being digital and everything, it's so important. So I appreciated your explanations too because your wonderful pictures made a lot more sense to me. After that, and the fact that we have backups and backup of backups, I mean, you guys really are planning for everything. And we can't help other human mistakes outside of here, but I appreciate all you're doing to keep it at least in the district in-house, working well.
Mr. Krubus?
I was a little nervous because you had twenty-nine pages. But then I remember that you were doing the presentation and you got it down to twenty minutes, so that's pretty good. I always struggle with this one a little bit. Like, where does technology stop? Why are we getting a presentation about technology? You know, at some level, a pen is technology. And then you can see where the presentation grows, where you're talking about a switch and then you're talking about backup power, now you're talking about, you know, a line being over a street. And so it kind of just keeps broadening out. I think what is important to me is kind of our delivering of services to the end user. Like, this is all behind the scene, behind the curtain stuff. You know, the end user really doesn't care about this. You know, I'm looking at the, the map you drew on page five and I just glossed over a couple of those lines there, but. So I'm an end user, you know, does my, does my phone work? Does my Wi-Fi work? Does my computer work? The technology, the infrastructure, you know, the, the building envelope is, is all related to kind of delivering those services. What good is the technology if I got a leaky roof? What good is the technology if, you know, the bathroom isn't working? So it's all kind of interrelated. So I, I would appreciate administration, the district, not just focusing on the technology side of it, but also incorporating some of these, these other areas because they are important. You know, I don't need like a plumbing diagram to appreciate, you know, that, that's a service we deliver, but we are getting a certain level of detail here that's very impressive. But ultimately, we want to, we want to deliver a good quality workday and student day for, you know, for our, our community. And if, you know, if bathrooms are down or walls are caving in, that also impacts, you know, whether the Chromebook's working or your, you know, bus is arriving on time. So that's just my broader view is that, you know, when does technology stop? And when is it part of the hardscape and the softscapes aspect of it? And I know you do, on the other presentation, you do hit more on the, the software side. Because what is also important to me is the, the web filtering, you know, the monitoring. And that's not in this presentation, but that is kind of just important. It lays over the stuff, but, you know, that's where, that's where the value is. I think, you know, you got to deliver the, the data, the pipe, but it's got to be in the right way to make sure it's educationally appropriate, it's part of our curriculum, it's part of our instructional material selections, all that stuff. So, you know, it's a lot to say, but I think I like the presentation, but I think we can expand it. And it's not just, you know, your office, it's more administration to say, you know, do we need another presentation? You know, when, when does this technology would be a natural handoff to say, okay, now we need to hear, you know, from the, the building operation office to talk about some of these other things. So that's my comments, that's it.
No, I can appreciate that too. And I will say, the, the filter is due up this summer, so in the fall, you're going to hear about the new filter.
Is that price tag up there? All right, next time.
Ms. Jane?
I just appreciate over the years how you've been very thorough, thorough with us in terms of informing us how the systems work, where we needed to make changes and why, where we're not making changes and why, the costs associated with it, and then the end, the experience. I think with anything technology, we take it for granted as long as it works. And then eyes are all on you when it doesn't work. And I think what you have done over the years is provided us with information and knowledge to understand how the systems work. And I think that's what you did today, as we become more heavily reliant on the internet, not just individually in our lives, but as a district. This, for me, was very helpful in, in understanding how we are moving to more cloud-based systems and how we're supporting that usage. So again, I just found it very informative. I don't have any questions, but just thank you.
So thank you. Having spent my career helping to design and support telecom networks, I can greatly appreciate the work you have done to make sure, certain that we have redundancy and that we have simplified our configurations. So I think your cost-benefit analysis that you have done to avoid some costs that would be very pricey and probably a small percentage as a possible solution to something that might happen to our network is really helpful and important. So I really appreciate that. I think you've done a great job trying to explain some very complicated equipment and scenarios to the board and, and done a good job keeping our systems up and running, so thank you so much.
Okay, we will now have our presentation regarding Portrait of an Educator update from Carrie Beth Harry, Sharon Ruff, and Katie Pop. Katie here?
Good evening, board members. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to share with you the incredible work that we have done on Portrait of an Educator. This task was outlined in the strategic plan priority two, objective three, and strategy three. It's, it also encompasses the board policies listed. With me tonight are not only committee members for the Portrait of an Educator, but also strong proponents of the importance of hiring right. Sharon Ruff, Director of Human Resources, and Katie Pop, IPEA President, Teacher, and Grow Your Own Teacher alum. We'll be presenting to you an overview and update of our work, sharing our commitment and timelines, highlighting our accomplishments, and outlining our next steps. The development of the Portrait of an Educator compelled us to reflect and connect the work we're already doing and enhance it. The competencies we identified are solid and our process allowed us to create a consistent, values-driven standard that supports our mission of inspiring all students to achieve their greatest potential.
Building on the success of our Portrait of a Graduate, our goal was to define what effective teaching and leadership looks like in District 204. The process compelled us to reflect and celebrate the work we're already doing. We truly believe this comprehensive approach to recruitment and retention will lead to a workforce that allows students to see themselves represented in the adults around them. The Portrait of an Educator framework informs how we assess candidates from the outset and uses data-driven approaches to ensure that our hiring practices are equitable and reflect our vision.
The district contracted with Batel for Kids, whom we worked with on the Portrait of a Graduate, and began our work in September. We met three times throughout the fall for a full-day session to discuss, reflect, challenge, and craft what we believed were core competencies for educators. We truly believe that everyone is an educator, so while our focus was on teachers, we also discussed how this applies to support staff and administration too. One of our strengths is the commitment to growth and development in our current educators. Portrait of an Educator enhances that strength. We have incredible support and leadership from administration, comprehensive instructional coaching, targeted mentoring programs, robust professional learning communities, longstanding affinity groups, purposeful learning, purposeful professional learning opportunities, and simply put, great educators. This was highlighted multiple times during the committee work and shifts the focus as we roll this out from presenting this as an initiative to continuing our purposeful work. We'd like to take this opportunity to say a huge thank you to our committee members, which were made up of administrators at the CEC and all levels, teachers, students, and community members. And without them, this work would not be possible.
Our task in year one was to identify essential qualities and competencies for a portrait of a teacher. We've completed that task, but it's not just simply checking the box in our strategic plan. It's a foundational step for us to look at how we embed this into the work at various levels of our recruitment and retention strategies. Upon the completion of the work by the committee, we shared our work at a high level with administrators and asked them to participate in a few activities that allowed them the same opportunity to explore and reflect how to apply these competencies to the work that they're doing in the hiring process. So for example, we provided them with prompts and allowed them to explore, based on these five competencies, different questions for an interview, and then allowed them to create a rubric by which to judge those, those responses. That's just an example of one of the activities we shared with them. We've used this trial, or we've also used this as a trial in some of our recent interviews. So we've put this to practice as well. We'll continue to assess and refine and apply in years two and three, expanding it to more areas of recruitment and then into retention. This cycle of work, which is the practicing, assessing, refining, mirrors that of what we would want our educators to be doing in their classrooms and offices and students as they continue to grow and develop. We'd like to share with you in more detail the five competencies that we selected and then developed as our graphic, which is displayed here for you.
Here are our five core competencies with their associated definitions. It's not surprising that you'll see an overlap with the Portrait of a Graphic competency, and it's natural that the competencies we aspire towards with our students would be expected and reflected in our teachers. What was important to the committee was that we developed the competencies and definitions in our voice, a clear and true reflection of what it means to be part of Indian Prairie School District 204. Our goal is to continue to build on our strength of solid teacher retention and refine our recruitment process to minimize time and cost of turnover. According to the U.S. Department of Labor, the cost of a bad hire in education can be up to thirty percent of the employee's first year's salary. We'll use the completed Portrait of an Educator work to target these areas. Our branding, application process, screening and interview processes, professional growth opportunities, and retention strategies. Throughout each area, we'll do a formal assessment by looking at data and trends. The Portrait of an Educator gives us the foundation and structure to do that work. Additionally, we'd like to explore job satisfaction and proactively address challenges so that we have a consistent, values-driven standard that supports our mission to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. The Portrait of an Educator gives us a springboard to grow and develop both our existing and new staff members.
So thank you for your time. At this, at this time, we'd like to open up the floor for questions.
We'll start with Ms. Jane.
Thank you. I'll just go to slide six because I just have a couple of questions here. In, just out of curiosity, in identifying the qualities and competencies, what type of material was looked at to, to kind of identify and narrow the ones that you've identified?
So we were actually presented with a list of probably close to seventy different competencies. And so the committee as a whole went through and identified what we felt were our strongest and narrowed it down and narrowed it down. And actually had some really good conversations in the committee about what, what we felt was the strongest and most relevant for us. As you'll see, there is some overlap with our Portrait of a Graduate, and we knew that that would be natural. But then, you know, it was just, it was just the collaboration of the committee that really determined what we felt was, was the strongest. And there were some clear leaders and then there were some that, that required a little bit more discussion and debate.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. And I, I was really happy to hear about future plans with regard to, first of all, I'm, I'm really happy to hear how you've been piloting the questions so far in interview process. And, and I'll be eager to hear in the coming year or so about how it's being implemented with the retention aspect of it more specifically. I, I guess I'm not aware, how are our educators evaluated? Is, is there, is there a rubric that mirrors? Like, what, what are, what qualities and competencies are we, how are we assessing our educators currently? And then how do you see this Portrait of an Educator influencing how we might continue to evaluate our educators?
So currently, right now, our staff is evaluated through the Danielson Framework model. And a lot of the competencies, the five core ones that we addressed, you see are spread throughout the entire evaluation process and the different attributes. While it doesn't specifically pick out those specific five competencies, that vocabulary is used there. And those five competencies, that vocabulary is used consistently in our teaching practices and in our reflective processes when we have our conversations with administrators discussing our craft.
That's great to hear. I, I'm very excited by this. As an educator myself, I could, you know, a portrait like this could be really motivating if everything is aligned with it. You know, even the way we recognize our educators with awards and how it aligns with the Portrait of an Educator. I think all of that is going to happen in the coming years and I'm really excited. I think all of that, um, is going to happen in the coming years, and I'm really excited to see how it plays out. Thank you, no questions.
Ms. Guns?
I completely agree with, uh, Board Member Jane, where it is very exciting to see this unfold, and I'm actually building on, on what she had been asking about, when you're talking about the interview process, is it something that's being used with all interviews kind of going forward? Is it certain administrators using it, interviewing certain staff, and kind of tweaking it, and then before it is used for, like, every, an interview? If that makes sense to you, Carrie?
It does, yeah, and the intention is that it would be rolled out to all sort of classifications of positions. Right now, the trial has been pretty limited.
Okay.
Um, but it's been exciting to see, and, and there is, um, you know, just, just the alignment. While that was probably happening in the past, it wasn't structured, and so the alignment that we've been able to do has been also exciting for those on the interview committee to see. Uh, and the results have been interesting too, just as we've, we've gone through that and, and seen where some of the candidates have fallen based on, on their responses as they, they line up with the competencies.
No, I think that, honestly, that's great, and I love that. So, it'll just kind of, you see what works, what doesn't, and before it gets rolled out to everybody. I know, and that was my, my only question, thank you so much for that clarification, but it is, it's so exciting to see this, as we had heard about it earlier, seeing it actually come to fruition, so thank you.
Mr. Krubas?
I really like this. I don't exactly know why I do, though. I'm trying to figure that out. That's where I, that's, that's most of my life right there, but what I think I like most about it is that it is a portrait. But it also kind of lets me see, I can see myself in here, and so we're talking about being adaptable as kind of a, a guidestone, but then how does that apply to me? How do I be adaptable? You know, is, is that on a spectrum, or are there different domains with it? So, I enjoy that we're trying to take a snapshot, trying to say, you know, this is what, uh, we want as an educator in 204, but then it's also, how does it apply to me as an educator? So, that's the value, I think, having winged it to, to get there, so, thank you, that's it.
Mr. Rising?
Can you go back to slide six again, because, just because I like that? So, first of all, I'm totally excited to hear that we're already putting some of this into practice in the hiring and looking for some of those competencies or characteristics as it relates to this Portrait of an Educator. I am excited to see how we fine-tune this to use it for recruiting. I'm sure you will discover a lot, and you probably have ideas, but, you know, I'm sure you'll learn a lot as you attend more recruiting events and kind of talk about this and have those conversations, so I'm excited to hear about that down the road. The professional growth part, kind of alluding to what Mr. Krubas said, I'm also excited to see how that kind of develops and where we could really expand this as it relates to our teachers and professional development that we already have, but now we can kind of fine-tune it around some of the Portrait of Educator. Where my question is, is on the retention part. I know that is down the road, but I'm just curious your initial thoughts of where this might help. I especially like to hear from Katie, uh, maybe on that piece. But I, any of you is fine to, to hear from, I, but I, I'm just curious where you maybe see this lending to that retention part? Um, and again, I know this is down the road, but just initial thoughts.
I think the conversations that we typically have with teachers, the five cores that we picked are, are conversations our teachers are having in their PLCs. So, it won't be surprising to them to see that this is what we've identified, because they're doing this every day. I think it, the retention part comes from where you're going to, who you're partner with and who you're collaborating and working with. The newbie teacher, the, you know, the first or second year who's working with the veteran who's the twenty-second, twenty-two years into the profession, that's where you're gonna see the retention, because they're gonna see how this applies, how it's applicable, and how I can grow from learning from the veteran teachers, using those, using that verbiage. You see where the creativity comes in, you see how you have to be adaptable and change the lesson, because it worked first period, but it would have worked better if I tweak it, so I'm changing it for second period. So, kind of seeing it in practice and having those professional conversations in PLC and on SIP days and on institute days is what, is where it plays out.
Cool, thank you.
Ms. Fostak?
Thank you for the presentation and for the work on this. I appreciate the fact that I heard that you included students in this building process too. My first question is, um, something that Katie mentioned briefly for use and reflective practices, that kind of what Justin was saying too. Is this something that we expect to use with educators for self-evaluation throughout the year?
I think evaluate, uh, teachers are using this every year, I mean, or all the time, every day. I mean, you're, again, you're constantly adapting your lesson, you're constantly having to be creative in how you're implementing it. You're always reflecting on what worked, what didn't work. So, it's, it's something that just is done naturally. I don't know that you always have like a set rules that you're following, that this is when you do it and this is how. It, it's just something that you, the longer you teach, it comes more naturally, and the more you can instill that practice and mindset in the non-tenured teachers as they start to come through the ranks, the, the more it just becomes natural.
I think, I, I asked about that specifically because I think, um, even though I, I'm sure that the, all of these things are being practiced and reflected and grown, um, regularly, that intentional stepping back and looking at where can I grow in an area in one of these that we have collectively and cohesively decided is gonna be really valuable for us as a district to say, this is, these are the educators we want. It, sometimes I, I find for myself as an educator, that intentional self-reflection on where can I put in some growth this year? Helps us all, so I just didn't know if that, if there are potential plans for that. And then, when you have the, um, the three-year process, have you decided what measurement tools you, you'll use to say, yes, this, this works? Are, are descriptions on slide seven fully encompass what we want? How will you measure at year three, this is getting the outcome that we wanted to have? Does this, is this really the final draft of what we want?
Those are great questions. So, we did talk a, a little bit about that, um, as a committee, and then, uh, as an administrative group, a little bit further how we wanna develop that. So, just for example, um, with the interview questions that we created, we also developed our own rubric. So, we were, we're kind of, we were kind of building it a little bit as we go, um, just to see how it works. Um, and then once we're pretty comfortable with that, I think we'll establish something that is, is more a standard, um, for that, but we're, we're still kind of trying to figure that out. I, I think it's, um, really exciting, because not only is this a tool that we can use, like Sharon was saying, at, at the, at the outset with recruitment, but this is a tool that we're gonna use, um, as teachers continue to grow and develop, and I really appreciate your, um, pointing out that it is a, it, these are areas that we would like teachers to do some self-reflection on. This is a, a continuum, and, um, we're just really excited about it.
Oh, thank you for the work.
So, thank you very much. I know the board has been asking about where we're at with this, um, like, regularly, and so we're excited to have this presented to us. I, um, when I saw the five areas, um, I thought, uh, boy, those are the right ones. Like, if I had a teacher, these are what I would like to have valued in that teacher and, um, skills that they would, um, represent. So, I, I was very happy when I, um, I, I saw those, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this with a large committee too, coming up with these words and picking out of seventy different areas or whatever. I do think you nailed it with those five personally. And, uh, those are skills that I think we want to promote and value in our teachers and our staff, and, um, I thank you for the work and look forward to seeing this implemented across many different areas, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our, um, last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Does anyone have any items?
I, I have an update. Just for, um, with regards to the public comment tonight, uh, I just want everyone to understand, it is a federal requirement. Because we participate in the, uh, National School Lunch Program, we may not have the fundraising type of activity. As the young man was speaking, I was reminded, sort of in my mind, I could remember hearing this before in my prior lives. And, um, luckily, Ron Johnson was here, and he spoke to the student, and he reminds me that it is a, it is a federal requirement because we're in the, in that program. So, just want everyone to know.
Alright, then I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We all want to stay here tonight. Okay, thank you.